Yes, I think at first orientation stuff.
Counselors, I don't know how many are.
Yeah, they will in a second. April Tim Howard is actually on, so she'll be starting the meeting.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay, can you hear, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, hi, everybody. Okay, we open it up for orientation. Vijay, I see you was talking. You want to go ahead and continue? Can you hear me, Felicia?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, let me see if I can my volume up a little bit lower. Okay, okay. Welcome to City of Inkster Orientation. We do have several items on the agenda to discuss. So I want to open it up for new business. We don't have anything other than no previous business, so I guess we just open it up to new business. First discussion item is Vijay, consider approval of Plant Moran Engagement Letter for supplemental hours through June 30th, 2021. The associated expenditures are 100% reimbursed through the Michigan Department of Treasury. Vijay, you want to speak on that?
Yeah. Oh, I continuously have discussions whether phone calls or emails with a couple of individuals at the state. And what they do is they help provide guidance to cities that need a little bit of financial help and guidance. And while during these discussions, I've explained and they're very familiar with all of the outstanding grant items and everything of that nature and other work being going on, they offered for me to get a proposal from Plant Moran on 20, at that time, it was 20 additional hours between the point in time they asked me through the end of the fiscal year. And they took that proposal. They told me, hey, we can reimburse you 100% for it. We think this is a good option for you to ensure that it helps you catch up on a bunch of items. So what I did here is I provided the proposal to you guys. And in here, it is hitting, it is hitting the account that we use for Plant Moran in the Treasury Department. And the offset, which will be 100% reimbursable, is going to go to that grant account that I have listed there. And the way we'll do this is Plant Moran will invoice us monthly on this. As soon as I pay it, I've told the state that I'll be sending it to them so that we can get reimbursed along the way. So that we're never out of cash for too long.
Okay, do I have any, any questions from the council?
Vijay, this is money they just give you just for that purpose only?
Yep, and they, they brought it up to me because they know how much we're dealing with from 2018, 19, and 2020.
Okay, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know, because I know they were the state supposedly giving local, local municipalities money. But I just, I just don't want us to say, well, this is the money they want to use it for, you know? Do we ever find out how much money that the city is going to end up getting?
On this? Yeah, it's, it's in the packet here. It's 40.
Now, you said what they're getting for this. This is something different. I'm talking about the stimulus money that's supposed to come down to the city.
So the stimulus money, I have been told a number, but until it's official, I don't know that I want, I don't want to guess until it's officially in writing to me somewhere, is really what I should say. Like, I'm hesitant to get too excited about that number until I have it in front of me.
So you're going to get excited about it?
It, it's, it would be a, what the state told me is a substantial amount for us. But I don't want any one-time amount to change what we need to do. Because it is important, we fix our, it's important that we fix our expenditures regardless of any one-time amount that comes in. Like, I want us to be fiscally sustainable now and into the future. This one-time amount should help bolster that.
Are you done, Councilman?
Yeah, yeah, on that subject, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do we have any other council members who'd like to chime in on this action item?
Yes, Madam Chair. In this, it tells us what Plant Moran usually charges us, that, or is this a usual charge? Or is this 360 hours and this 26 hours? What, what hours do they currently provide for us?
Right now, they provide 40 hours per week, though in all reality, they provide more than that. Contracted is 40 hours.
This number you have here is going to $48,000.
This number you have here, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can, yes.
Okay.
These numbers you have here, this is just for the time period from now till 50, 2021. These are the number of hours that they'll be providing for this 48.
Yes, this is just for additional hours. This is just for an additional 360 hours of Plant Moran's time. That's what the 48,600 is. That's what the state said they would reimburse us for.
Okay, you, you spoke before about, you know, all of the stuff that was left over from 18 and stuff like this. So this really isn't a job that should be done by one person, then? You need additional people?
I'm sorry, you're asking if?
No, you made a lot of references in the past to the amount of work that was left behind from 18, 19. So I'm just trying to find out if this is something you should have been doing all along? If it's not a job for one person as you seem to intimitate regarding the previous treasurer?
There is a difference between doing your job when you're supposed to and not doing it. Now, dealing with years past, I can't say why, but having to catch up for several years does require time, yes.
No, that's not what I asked, and I don't believe you're qualified to say who didn't do their job either, but be that event made. That's my question. Are you done?
Yes, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
That's okay, that's okay. Do I have any other council members like to chime in on this?
Yes. I was just wondering, was this, these items are additional work hours, they would be, I guess you could say, putting in to catch up everything? Was this something that would have been caught in our audit over the past years?
The, so this is a discussion I've had with the state as well. That we are finding items relating to prior years, which at times could, there's a difference if we have an invoice and we accrue for it, because then you have the PNL impact. But there's multiple times where I'm finding we never booked certain invoices. Those have a PNL impact in the current fiscal year. Now, if in aggregate those exceed a certain amount, then we have to determine whether there needs to be any sort of consideration of restatement or anything like that. So it has to hit a certain level for the audit to determine that a restatement should be there. But there's also the consideration of the auditors can only know what they can see at times. So if invoices are coming to us and they aren't booked, there may not be a way for the auditors to find something like that. Like, it's, we, we can find out if, you know, something's accrued but not paid. What that does is that grosses up your, your balance sheet because your cash is too high and your payables are too high. And that's what we found, I think, when I alluded to, we owe Wayne County certain money. Those were all accrued, so our cash is overstated to some extent, and our AP is overstated for that reason. Now, there's nothing wrong with that from an audit perspective. It's just, it looks a little different had you paid it, but from an audit perspective, until we hit a certain level of materiality, I don't think we'll have issues with prior years, even though it is unfavorable in the current year.
Now, any of it, like, something, and this is just because of checks and balances. I've sat on audit committees before. And the ones I've sat on, there's been different types of internal measures or internal controls you will put in place so that nothing really seeps through the crack, if you will, like this. Are there additional internal controls or measures that could be put in place so that any event, something like this were to occur again in the future? It's something the auditors could catch ahead of time and say, hey, in this particular year at least, you didn't do X, Y, and Z, and you need to account for that. Instead of being, you know, what, two, three years down the line, and we're talking about it in this particular capacity?
It is difficult to put any sort of controls in place if you receive an invoice but don't do anything with it. Like, that's just one of those where, you know, it's like, if someone sends me an invoice and I don't do anything with it, then it's, it's a difficult question to answer, what could be done better? What I'm trying to do is have, if we can, we're, we're trying to work on getting more invoices electronically. And doing that via a shared accounts payable email, because then what that'll do is if it goes to the shared email, I'm not the only one with access to that. Our AP person has it, so we can kind of make sure everything does get booked in real time or as real time as possible, given when we receive an invoice. And that'll help us ensure that what we're booking is, we record as incurred for expenses, which is what we really want.
And I guess that too, being having a shared email for the one thing, like what we talked about, FOIA coordinating. And when you have persons who are in higher elected office, because they'll have a district inbox that the whole office has access to, that everybody emails, because you can't access those particular individuals' inbox, so stuff may get missed. But with multiple, multiple hands, and I see, it, it can kind of still get missed, but it's a little step up, a little bit better, so I get that. I got a couple additional questions, and then I'll be done. So I saw it says staff hours, managerial hours, and partner hours. What is the difference between all three of those? I, I saw that breakdown on the agenda, and I was just curious, because, I mean, yeah, it sounds like staff, managerial, and partner, but I'm not really familiar versed in that, so I just wanted a little bit more clarity on it.
Are you asking the difference in price or what they provide? I'm sorry.
I guess what they provide, because you just said staff hours, managerial hours, and partner hours. Why is there set, three separate breakdowns, if you will?
Yeah, so what that is, is the staff will provide more of the day-to-day services that we need. A lot of that is, whether that's the reconciliations, getting a lot of the grant stuff together. And forecasting, budgeting, we're doing those meetings, getting the tax settlements that are due in the next month together. A lot of that will be the staff. Manager does the initial review for a number of things, and the partner may chime in here and there. That's why there's only a handful of partner hours there. And that's more of a, the partner hours won't be as much on the actual work, so much as a lot of times I leverage him for certain things, like five questions or I need to meet with them on something. So I imagine more of his time will go towards one-on-one type meetings or meetings with the mayor and I or whatever.
And my final thing is with the duties or scope of services that have been put on paper about what they'll be doing and contributing to additionally, will, because I noticed some of that stuff is from the Treasury Department, some of it's from the Special Projects Department. Once that ends in June, will those things 100% revert back to your own departments? Or will we be in the future looking for an extension because more assistance will be needed? Because I was just looking at that, because I was like, okay, well, does this lessen you guys' workload, or does this just help you catch up?
The goal is really to help us catch up. Like, I have pretty much had to take Plant Moran off of month-end, month-end close and other requirements in an effort to spend time on other things. So the goal is to help us catch up, get the money back for the different grants. And then, once we're up and running, so to speak, you know, the, we should be good from that standpoint. Like, it, it's, it's something we can maintain, but the additional stress on the teams from trying to catch up is really where the issues, like, arose from a time constraint standpoint.
Okay. Oh, thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll say, I yield the floor.
Okay, anyone else?
One question.
Wait, George, you gotta hold on. Is anybody else? Okay, I'd like to speak on that too. So the grant requirements that you listed up under scope of services, that's what they're trying to catch up, correct?
Yeah, so they've been spending time on that, but there's also the forecasting that we're working on. The complexities of that are directly impacted by what we find from 2018, 2019, 2020 that are influencing the current year financials. So.
Okay, so do they, have they been forecasting before, or just, this is, this is an additional scope of service?
The level at which we've been doing this is probably not something that has been done before. And the, the implementation of it is taking additional time as well. It, it's not something that a lot of, I'll, I'll say that a lot of department heads, when we've spoken, they've been like, hey, this is great. I know this took a long time, but it helps them understand their budget and what's in it. And it helps us truly understand how to leverage the department so we can figure out where we're going to be.
Okay, so that's something new that you get, that you have implemented since you've been here, right? Okay, okay. Something else, I have one more question. Update water and sewer utility rate model. I don't remember seeing that scope of service before. So what are they doing with the updated water and sewer utility rate model?
That is an additional service that they provide each year. I don't know the exact report that we get out of it, but it's something that is a requirement. So each year, it seems that they get the okay for that and they, they run with it. And.
I just don't ever remember seeing that on the scope of service from them in previous years. So that's why I was asking that.
Okay.
Okay, and then they do perform year to end property taxes. Is that something that they've done in the past, or this is new too? Year end close of property taxes settlement with Wayne County?
Yeah, yeah, they help us prepare that. And what I'm hoping is that we're able to use some of these hours for that, whereas I think in years past, we've incurred the expense. So we should.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was saying, we should definitely benefit and use these hours to our advantage.
Okay, and I, yeah, right. And I understand, because they've been with us for quite a while. So when you talk about settlement with Wayne County up under their services, I know that's something that we can get into after this. I do would like to speak to you or I email you in regards to that, because the money that was on the email was different. But I, I will email you on that, and then that way we won't hold up everybody else from tonight's meeting. But that's something that I will be talking with you further with, okay?
Certainly.
Okay, all right. All right, Councilman Williams.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I have another subject, so why don't I just wait and continue with talking to Vijay? There's something else I had to bring up.
Okay, so we could just go move along on the agenda then, right?
Right.
Okay. Okay, the next item, discussion action is Tracy Ann Jennings, consider approval of one offer to purchase case LD 20-25, one vacant lot located on the north side of Avondale Avenue between Michigan Avenue and Cherry Hill Road, which is legally described as 1D, 19D, 1B, 2B, 1A is an apple, P is a Tom. I mean, I'm sorry, P is a Paul, Tom, northeast. Do I have to read all that, Felicia, or just the beginning of this?
Just the big, just the beginning of it, actually.
Okay, okay.
From there.
Okay. And the amount is $500 to Willard Ray Powell Jr. Do I have anybody that want to speak on this gender item?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay.
On, so in the section that you just read, which is like the briefing of the agenda, it states $500. But on page 20, it states a total of $4,000. So I had wanted some clarity on that, because I was lost as to why such a difference in price. Are we selling it for 500, or are we selling it for 4,000?
Is Tracy on, is Tracy with us tonight?
Yeah.
Good evening, good evening. I'm here. My apologies. That is a typo in that it is the 500 and not 4,000. That should have been the sale remaining price to be paid was $400 and not 4,000.
I got you. Okay. Thank you. And then I guess just one additional request, Madam Chair, is, I know on there, like, when you're reading that description, it gives these big spaces. Say if there wasn't a physical address, we just have a parcel ID, but it stays in between Michigan Avenue and Cherry Hill. That's halfway through the city. And I was just wondering, I know in other cases where we have it where it intersects, and it'll say, like, for instance, near east of John Daly. Yeah, east of John Daly, west of Beach Daly, or something like that. It'll talk, or east of John Daly, north of Michigan Avenue. It'll talk about some intersections that, or streets that intersect to give you a general idea of a closer area. So I just wondered if we could get that changed or incorporated, because like I said, it has a physical address, but in between Michigan Avenue and Cherry Hill on Avondale, that's a huge stretch. You're thinking like, okay, well, Avondale runs from Beach Daly to Henry Russ. So ju- just for clarity purposes, that's all. I'm not sure if you understand any, like, guy, like I read it, but that's all. Because then the next one, it, uh, I think it's the next item down. No, it's not knowing here. It's on something else. Okay, but that's all.
Okay, anybody else would like to chime in on this?
Yes, Madam Chair. If you can hear me, I hear my audio is going in and out, so I don't know when I'm good or not.
I can hear you now.
That's the clarity purposes that he was stating. I mean, problems with descriptions we've been given. All three of these streets run the same way. Avondale, Michigan Avenue, and Cherry Hill run east and west. So it's impossible for us to determine exactly where this is. If, you know, we don't read the numbers and all that stuff like that. So once again, just to clarify, if we could get intersection street.
You're going out again, Sandra.
Okay, what I did, can you hear me now? No?
Hello? Yeah, we can hear you, whatever you're doing right there. We can hear you good.
Okay, I'm gonna be uncomfortable all night. Anyway, the, I just do this addressing logo, and it gave me a cross street. So Blackstone or something like that, so just a better way for us to understand.
Okay, you didn't say that out completely. Sandra, you still there?
Yeah, I'm still here. I don't know if y'all can hear me or not.
It's very, it's very hard. It's very, it's very hard. You, you going, you fading in and out.
I'm gonna see if I can switch to another computer because apparently, apparently my city laptop is failing. But that's all I wanted was about the, uh, the intersection street.
Okay, um, is anybody else would like to chime in on this? Okay, I do have one question. Um, on page nineteen, it has the address of two six one one Avondale. And this is a buildable lot. Um, and I'm wondering why we only charging five hundred for buildable lot?
Can you say it makes to the property y'all already own?
Tracy.
If I may?
Yes.
I believe too that, um, Stephanie Taylor may have her hand raised, or Stephanie Murray from, um, Murray, Murray's Real Estate. But the asking or offered price was the price that was presented on the application. And yes, it is, um, adjacent, I believe, to a property that Mr. Powell does already own.
Okay, cause it's not in, it's not in the background notes. That's why I'm asking that question. Okay, it's adjacent to his app.
I, I, I believe so. And you do have a raised hand. I think that may be the realtor.
Hello? Hi, how are you? This is Stephanie Taylor from Murray's Real Estate Services. Hi, um, protein and counsel and the community. Hi, um, the price of, the price of residential properties that you guys set and, and, um, been set for several years, two fifty for non-buildable, five hundred for buildable or higher. But it's up to the city to, um, change if you guys want us to change the price of them. That was what was voted in, um, years ago. So that's probably why they offer five, sometimes five hundred, sometimes, um, people do come in higher because they really want to go for it. Uh, we supposed to have a meeting coming up, hopefully soon to, um, determine if you guys want to increase prices. It's totally up to you, your body. Um, also on the applications that sent over underneath, um, on the application, it would tell exactly the between street. Um, so you guys will be able to see what is east of and west of on the application, actual application. So you, you do get that, um, as well. So, um, if you guys have any more questions, um, we would, we would love to work with you guys if y'all want to change the prices of what y'all want to charge for the, um, non-buildables and buildable lots.
And thank you for now. Um, I don't know if anybody, any of my colleagues have any questions for you. Okay, thank you. I, I don't think they have any questions at this time, but thank you so much for chiming, chiming in, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, the next item is, um, Caitlin Hines, consider approval of special land use for a pawn shop to be located on the north side of Michigan Avenue uh, in the B three general business district to Chow, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing his, his name right. Chill Harda is the applicant. Do I have any discussion on this item? Okay, moving on, um, the next item is Caitlin Hines, consider special land use for proposed medical and adult use marijuana retail store to be located on the south side of the street of two six eight three one Michigan Avenue between Sylvia and Princess in a TC district to John Clark is the applicant. I'm sorry. Do I have anybody, uh, wish to chime in on this item?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
Really quick, I'm sorry, I didn't chime in on the, on the last item. That was something that had came before council in twenty nineteen, just for the general public. Cause they had got asked about the signatures on the petitions that were submitted from, um, the applicant for the pawn shop. And that was something that was voted on. They did get the signatures from the residents. But, uh, moving up to this particular item, just for the general public and those who may not been in attendance at the planning commission meeting, just to give you a heads up, this is, uh, what used to be three fifteen north is just the applicant relocating and going through the process again. It did get voted on unanimously at the planning commission meeting.
Okay, is anyone else would like to chime in on this? Okay, moving to the last item, Kate and the highs, consider approval of special land use for medical and adult use marijuana provision center to be located on the south side of Cherry Hill Road in the existing shopping center at two nine three eight five Cherry Hill in the, in the, in the B two thoroughfare mixed use district. Uh, Ms. Samantha Vivens is the applicant. Do I have anybody need, that want to discuss this item?
Hmm, yes, Madam Chair.
Okay.
This is another one that came through the planning commission, uh, as everybody up here is well aware, this has been something that's been in process for some time and we've been dealing with on, on a different, uh, level, if you will. But it did get voted on unanimously at the planning commission level too. And I just wanted to speak to that again, because I know everybody wasn't at the planning commission meeting, might have some questions, and I just wanted to make sure I'm able to answer them if needed.
All right, anyone else? Okay, uh, Mr. Jones, do we have any closed item? I mean, I mean, um, closed session items?
No, I do not have any closed session items tonight.
Oh, wow, okay.
Madam Chairman.
Wait one second, okay, um, well, I guess that's it. Okay, Mr. uh, Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I, I just want to, um, normally I don't usually say anything, but when I see people trying to character, uh, do character assassination, I, I gets kind of like, uh, very disturbed about it. Okay, now I noticed at the last council meeting, my name was brought out from, uh, the young people just trying to open up the Harrison liquor store. And how my name came out of there, I haven't, I haven't really found out today. But let, let me say this. I, I do know the people that's opened up the Harrison liquor store. You haven't heard me even say anything about, about the liquor store, period. Now, how my name came out at the last council meeting, I think was very disturbing. Okay, uh, yes, do I have, do I have a relative that's part of that? Yes, I'll tell the world. Okay, uh, I don't need to jump no hoops uh, as they indicated, uh, trying to, trying to get the license for anybody. I do everything by the books, okay? My, my slate uh, in life is, and my character is always doing what's right. Okay, I didn't appreciate that. But what I want to say here and, and not trying to ridicule anyone. Okay, the young man that got on here and said that, uh, accused the people of the liquor store of being criminals. See, first of all, you, you need to know who they are. Okay, and these are, well, people in this community that works hard, got many years, got many businesses, invest in this community. And, and they no gangsters or anything. So I, I didn't appreciate that being brought out. And, and let me say this. Uh, and I, I'mma call this person's name, Mr. Charles Blackwell. You know, I think, young man, I went back and I was researching all, 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 all week about your character. You know, um, how you end up, okay, and if this is, it's not you, then we definitely owe you apologies. But here is saying, here says a prisoner in his own home and helped free you. And then come to find out you raised pretty close. You, you asked for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but yet you got eight hundred and eight, eighty-three thousand for four ninety-nine. Now, you know, I can understand your condition and what happened, okay, but you, you, you should be a better person. Now I noticed something, you, you, you tagged that the, 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 the attorney, David Jones. Okay, now, but David Jones, you've never checked the Allen Brothers. All of them are in the same firm. You've never attacked the Allen Brothers. Okay, then you turned around, you, you attacked Steve Chisholm. Young man who got a, a, his popularity in the, what they call the, uh, what do they call it, the Facebook, uh, 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 Twitter. Okay, you know, you know, you sitting here getting four years down from the county free. Okay, but yet you got eighty-three thousand dollars sitting on the sideline. You know, to go out and just, you know, attack at people. Now you don't even know the people and you studied tagging them. And I know you trying to, uh, uh, character assassinate the mayor of the city of Mason. Now whoever's behind you or what you trying to do, I suggest that you stop. Okay, because first of all, number one thing that you talk about this council can move the mayor because he owed taxes and stuff like that. And I, I haven't found the law yet. And the law that we did have in the, in, in, in the, in the charter, uh, uh, apparently it ain't there no more. So what happened to it, I don't know. Maybe, maybe the secretary of the charter can, can answer, answer that. But I, 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 I'm second time, we got things we have to do. Okay, we have things in this city that we need to come together on and, and we can make a difference. Okay, but for you coming out in Easter, see one thing about it, let me share this with you. The more you talk about somebody and try to set, uh, character assassinate them, that's, that's more powerful and, and more people gonna love them out here in Easter. You better learn Easter. Okay, and whoever you doing it for, it's all gonna come out into the open. So what you, is always the thing, what you do in the dark, now that article that people got behind you and rallied and tried to make you and, and do thing for you, your, your demeanor in life, you understand I apologize for doing that. But you should have that same type of ability and character. You know, I, I just want to bring that out, okay? I'm not in here and I'm, you know, we got to work together. Okay, and, and last but least, Madam Chairman, I just want to say to Sister Watley, the information that you gave at the last meeting about Craig Lewis was not true. I, I mean, and I'm not saying that you didn't know, I mean, you probably.
Um, you know, um, Councilman Williams, you know, um, I'm not, I'm not interrupting you, I I'm not interrupting you, but I don't think people want to hear back and forth, back and forth, who's right and who's wrong. But I'm gonna, uh, intervene on that one for right now. Uh, you can save it for your public comment. Um, if we don't have any other, does anybody else have anything that they would like to talk about before seven o'clock? I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Williams, what did you say?
I do have the floor.
I know you do have a floor, but I'm intervening.
I told last meeting.
Well, I'm just saying, and, and what I'm saying is all of this can be for your public, you can be for your public comments, not at this time, okay? That's all I'm saying. Wait till your public comments. That's all I'm asking you to do.
But you gave me the floor.
I know, but when you started going on and on, but, but I'm just, I'm just telling you, okay? We can save that for public comments. Um, I'm gonna ask any other council person, is there anything that they would like to talk about between now and, and seven o'clock?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just had, um, I, I think we went over the, um, the item number, I mean, item, let me see what it is, I'm sorry. I think it was item D.
Uh-huh.
Now, the question that I have is, they said that it was, uh, another location. Now, is, is the applicant gonna have both locations, or is just going to be this one location?
Is Ms. Hines on the line?
Hello?
Hi, hi, Ms. Hines, how are you?
I'm great, how are you?
I'm doing great. Did you hear what the Councilman Shaw asked?
Are we talking about three, uh, the old three fifteen north?
Yes.
Yep.
Uh, yeah, so it's, they're only going into the one location.
Okay, so the, the one that's on Inxter Road is going to be dissolved, or?
So the one on Inxter Road, um, that is going, we have another applicant who's looking, uh, to go in there. They had previously just leased the property, but their new property, they own it.
Okay, okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, so I guess there's no other questions, so we can, yes. I, I can't hear you at all. Councilwoman Wiley.
Okay.
Can anybody else hear?
No, I'm, I'm not sure what's happening with her microphones, but it is going in and out.
Okay, can you do that every now?
It's very muffled.
Okay, I'm gonna send the, I'm gonna send the Stephen a text and see if he'll.
Okay, we're gonna have to wait on her. Okay, so if no other questions or anything, we, I guess we can adjourn until, uh, seven o'clock. Is that okay? And Dave, you said we don't have anything to talk about, correct?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. So I guess we're in adjourn, uh, we'll come back at seven o'clock. Virtual meeting, um, call a meeting to order, pledge allegiance. Stand up and say pledge allegiance, okay? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. Each stands, one nation. Oh, Lord, I'm just seeing this all wrong. I'm sorry. Can you start this off, uh, what, uh, George Williams?
Well, you're doing a good job.
Okay, well, I'm gonna start off. Pardon me?
You're doing great.
Okay.
You go ahead, you just nervous.
Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of and to the republic. Just stands.
One nation.
One nation, under God.
With liberty and justice.
Justice for all. Okay, we don't. Okay, can you say a prayer for us, um? Councilman Williams?
Yes. Father God, we come right now, no other way but from heart to heart, leaning on your everlasting love. Without you, Father, we can't do nothing. I ask that you continue to bind us together with love, unity, and strength. In the name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
Amen. Roll call.
Mayor Wimberly has an excused absence tonight. Mayor Protim Howard.
Here in my home in City of Inxter.
Councilwoman Wiley.
Uh, present appearing remotely in my home in the city of Inxter, Michigan, Wayne County.
Councilman Williams.
Here at home, in my home, here in the city of Inxter, Wayne County.
Councilwoman Washington.
Appearing virtually in my home in the city of Inxter in Wayne County.
Councilman William, I'm sorry, Councilman Shaw.
Here, Inxter, Michigan.
Okay, and Council, uh, Menchison.
President report, reported virtually from my home, Inxter, Michigan, County of Wayne.
Mayor Protim Howard, we have six presents tonight and we do have a quorum.
Okay, we have no closed session items, uh, approval of agenda.
So move, Madam Chair.
Will move in support?
For support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Roll call.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
And Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Protim, we have six yay.
All right, consent agenda.
Hey, Mayor Protim?
Yes.
Just FYI, Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib did enter the room.
Okay, all right, before we do that, um, we can put her on.
And Congresswoman, we can see you, just can't hear you yet, there you go.
Hello, no, I didn't know, I didn't want to interrupt or anything. I didn't know what I could possibly, uh, just, just say hello to everyone and just give you all the good news about the American Rescue Plan.
Hi, how are you?
I'm very blessed, uh, because, how are you?
I'm doing great.
Good. Um, so I didn't know if, if, if folks were open to me talking about it at all, is that, is that a proper?
Oh, no, you elected official, you can have the floor.
Oh, okay, well, I don't want to take up too much time. I just wanted to give you all the good news about the funding and support that's coming to Inxter. So you all know two point four million approximately, that much money is going to be coming from the federal government. Um, and it, it's going to the state, but it will be, uh, will be required to be spent or sent to you all uh, within sixty days. But also the direct stimulus, uh, payments, we call survival checks, are heading, uh, uh, the way of many of our residents, including uh, three thousand dollars and thirty-six hundred dollars per child if they're under six, three thousand for over six to seventeen years of age, you'll be able to give the child tax credit. It's enhanced, it's enhanced, so um, it's not going to be cut off because of income and things like that. There were requirements prior to. Um, and then we're also expanding the mobility of vaccinations, as you probably have seen or heard. Kind of sense that more and more of our vaccinations are now more available. But our federally accredited clinic in Inxter are, um, uh, a Western Wayne Clinic, uh, in Inxter is going to be one of the, uh, sites that gets direct, um, support and funding from the federal government to provide more support, uh, from the federal government to provide more support during the public uh pen, during the public health crisis or the pandemic, so I'm super excited about that. We did extend the unemployment uh to three hundred dollars until the end of the summer, uh hoping to continue to extend that as 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 we uh see fit uh with the needs of our residents. Um, the other really important, a lot of our kids, I know we don't have a school district and trust me, that pains me a lot, uh, and and hoping that will change one day in the City of Inxter. But our Western, our Wayne Westline Community School District, where many of our kids are going to, they are going to be receiving over thirty five million dollars um to open schools safely. Yes, Kim. So I want you all to be aware because I need you all to make sure that this is all getting implemented in a way um that is beneficial to every single city, you know, Inxter resident. Uh, so again, not only the survival check, the extension on um unemployment benefits, the expansion on help for vaccinations, our schools safely, uh, and then the direct assistance to the City of Inxter with the two point four million. On top of that, a lot of residents are calling me about water assistance, uh eviction issues, uh utility assistance, know that we also put a a a ton of support in there for that. As we get information, I know I have a staff member on. Uh, if you ever, as a council member, as city clerk, as anybody that you get encountered with in the City of Inxter that is having difficulty with any of those quality life issues, please know my office is ready to help. We will be working with uh the state as well as some of the nonprofit organizations, including Wayne Metro Community Action Agency, which does receive funding to help our Wayne County residents. Um, but with that, I'll open up to any questions, but I just, I wanted to give you all the good news. I'm really been excited, been working hard on this. Um, and uh, you know, for our small business community, and there's another additional fifty billion in here, it's to our real mom and pop businesses, or really small businesses. It's considered a loan, but I I tell everybody, it's it's very much can turn into a grant the way the flexibility is. Please, if you're a five oh one C three, if you're a church in in the City of Inxter, uh nonprofit in the City of Inxter, and you're struggling during the pandemic, know that the Small Business Administration funding that we put in there, you qualify to apply for that. So please do talk to our office in regards to that as well. Um, but I'll make sure to put in the chat our phone number and email that you can contact us. Many of the council members already reach out to me directly. Please continue to do so when you when you do have a resident in need. So I just really wanted to say hello and and thank you all for for believing this is what we deserve, is a people's bailout, and that's what the American Rescue Plan uh intends to do, and so we we again, hope that uh it betters the lives of many of our Inxter residents and families.
All right, thank you. Anyone on council have uh any questions for her?
Uh, no, um, this Councilwoman Washington, I just wanted to say thank you for your advocacy and just advocating for thirteen district and also our Inxter residents, we really appreciate it.
And we do appreciate it. All right, thank you, keep up the good work.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I I'd like to ask the question. I didn't, uh, Congresswoman, I didn't get the number to the people that you stop on for nonprofit organizations, churches.
Yes, sir, so. Yes, so you'll hear them say this is Small Business Administration support, it's fifty billion dollars. It's just not for only business, small business, it's not only for businesses, it's also for uh faith-based five oh one C three organizations as well can apply for the grant.
Right. How do you get?
I can put it in the chat, I'm sorry, I didn't see the chat, but I'll give you the number, three one three four six three six two two zero.
Six what?
Two two zero.
Two zero, two.
Yep.
Six two?
Two zero. Six two twenty.
Okay.
Yeah, so again, three one three four six three sixty two twenty.
Amen, okay, thank you.
No, thank you, sir, and yes, please, again, faith-based organizations can apply.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, ju- uh, just wanted to let Congresswoman know she had kept mentioning the chat, and we don't have that particular option on this Zoom call. Um, so just hopefully you could maybe pass that information along to our city clerk.
Oh, sorry, did I start something? I don't want to bother people with the phone number because it always slows down the meetings, I apologize.
No, not at all, I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving on, uh consent agenda.
So move, Madam Chair.
Okay, it's been moved, any support? Okay, it's been moved and supported, roll call.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
And Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Mayor Protim, we have six yays.
Okay, moving on, uh, do we have any updates on boards and commissions?
Councilmember Williams, okay. I was just reminding you, Councilmember, will you?
I'd like to appoint, uh, re- reappoint, uh, Gabe Henderson to the beautification committee.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, uh, roll call.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
And Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Mayor Protim, we have six yays.
Okay. New business. Oh, I'm sorry, is it any other appointments for boards and commission? Okay, so moving on, uh, new business.
New business, item A is consider approval of the Plant Moran Engagement Letter for supplemental hours through six thirty twenty twenty one. The associated expenditures are one hundred percent reimbursable through the Michigan Department of Treasury.
So move, Madam Chair.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, any discussion? Vijay, would you like to give us a brief uh outline on this for those members who, people who may have joined us at seven o'clock?
Certainly, so this is an engagement letter for Plant Moran to provide an additional three hundred and sixty hours of time um between now and the fiscal year end, six thirty twenty twenty one. Uh, Plant Moran will bill us on a monthly basis, and we will turn around and the state will reimburse us for the entirety of that three hundred and sixty hours, which in total will be three eight thousand six hundred dollars. Um, and this was the state's idea for uh to help us catch up on a number of items and put a little bit more work into uh different areas.
Okay, is any other discussion on this item?
Yes, uh. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, um, I just have one other question. Um. It seems to me that, um, based on the money that they've listed, like twenty seven hundred per week, um, or it says, or, if that amount is not spent, because for uh the time period between now and the thirtieth, um, the it's less money. If there is money left over, or should there be money left over? What happens to that?
We're only being reimbursed for the amount we actually spend, so uh, the plan is to spend this full amount um on these different projects, but uh, there's no carryover or anything like that, it's uh, we'll, like, we're looking to spend the forty eight thousand six hundred and be reimbursed for that exact amount.
Okay, um, because, like I said, adding it up, there's um some left over. But then the next line, it says, as stipulated in our April eleventh, two thousand seventeen agreement with the city, the rates listed above will increase three percent on July first, twenty twenty one. And annually thereafter, should you continue to utilize this service. This is just for that forty eight thousand dollar situation, correct?
Yeah, so what they did was they took their twenty seventeen contract, and in there, there's uh certain rates that they had at that time, which year over year, there's a three percent kicker. So they just calculated that up for us and put these numbers here on this contract. And in the event that this were to be extended, which I'm not saying that that's the plan at at all, those would also uh tick up by the three percent kicker.
Okay, when you say those, um.
All all charges have a three percent year-over-year increase.
Okay, so this is just for this engagement situation, right? It has nothing to do with a normal trial.
Yeah, yeah, it's put in there more as a formality, like if this were to continue, like the additional hours, but um, this is, uh, again, it's something that uh, I think these guys had to put in there from a legal perspective. And our our plan is to utilize all of these hours between now and June thirtieth, twenty twenty one, to really uh focus on what we need to focus on, and then at that point, uh, like Brian and I have talked, like, that's where we're planning on ending this contract.
Okay, thank you.
It's this additional hours contract, just to clarify.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, is there any other questions? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
And Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Williams? I think you might be on mute, sir.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, we, uh, Mayor Protim, we have six yays.
Okay, motion carrying. Okay, item B?
Item B is consider approval of one offer to purchase one vacant lot located on the north side of Avondale between Michigan Ave and Cherry Hill Road, which is legally described as duly noted, also known as two six one one zero Avondale, in the amount of five hundred dollars to Willard Ray Powell, Jr.
So move, Madam Chairman.
Has been moved, any support?
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, uh, discussion? Okay, uh, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Protim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yeah.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
And Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Protim, we have six yays.
Okay, motion carrying. Item C?
Item C is consider approval of a special land use for a pawn shop to be located on the north side of Michigan Avenue at two nine two three zero Michigan Ave, in the B three General Business District. Ferris Chihadi is the applicant.
So move, Madam Chair.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I do have a a question. Uh, I noticed that that in the packet, it talked about several waivers, and I didn't see in the planning commission minutes, did they, did they pass those waivers that was uh, introduced here? Yeah.
Councilman Chisholm?
I'm sorry, I didn't know if you recall it, Caitlin, not my apologies.
Okay, well, Caitlin, I didn't know if either one of y'all wanted to chime in on that.
I can, we did pass all the waivers.
Okay, now, is the is the applicant here today?
Yes.
Now, I just wanted to to ask the applicant through the chair, uh, is the applicant planning on joining the Inxter Chamber of Commerce?
The applicant is on? Hello, how are you, I'm Ferris Chihadi, how's it going?
Hi, how are you?
Thanks for chiming in, doing wonderful, thank you, good evening all. Um, uh, I didn't think about that, but yes, absolutely, for the growth of the city, anything that we can join, that should not be a problem at all. Um, we're glad to help out and support and join.
Mr. Shaw, I definitely want to encourage you to uh join the Inxter Chamber of Commerce. Uh, it's a very, very powerful organization, moving organization in the city of Inxter, of uh light minds, of business folks, and uh we we want to welcome you to do so. Now, also, Miss Madam Chair, uh, you talked about the irrigation, that you're gonna have somebody out there with the greenery? Doing the irrigation?
Yes, so someone will actually come out there a couple of times a week, as we had in the waivers that would uh take care of the uh the site, take care of the landscaping, the irrigation of it. Um, something that would look very beautiful and add more of your beautification of Michigan Avenue in the State of Inxter.
Okay, yeah, because that's that's exactly what I'm looking at. Now, you're gonna do some improvements to the outside of the facade as well, I think some someone was asking that on planning commission, but I also want to piggyback on that. Um, are you gonna, you know, do some paintwork and what have you with that?
Councilman Shaw, you absolutely right, that's a really good point, we have and the plans that we presented to um the commission planning last week, exactly what's gonna happen, Caitlin is aware of that of that as well. Um, there's gonna be a change to the way this building looks on improvements um that would um look very presentable to everybody who drive by that um location and everybody in the city to see the improvements in that site as well.
Okay, that that's all I have, Madam Chair, I wish you, I wish you much success.
Thank you, Councilman, thank you.
Thank you, uh, are there any other questions? Okay, roll call.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yeah.
Mayor Protim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
And Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Mayor Protim, we have six yays.
Okay, motion approved, motion passed. Uh, item D?
Item D is consider approval of a uh special land use for a proposed medical and adult use marijuana retail store to be located on the south side of the street at two six eight three one Michigan Ave between Sylvia and Princess in the TCD Town Center District, John Clark is the applicant.
Go move, Madam Chairman. Hello?
Yes, I hear you. Has it been supported?
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, uh, discussion?
I guess, Madam Chair, I could just recap on earlier for the general audiences joining us now. This is a a business owner that was already here. Unfortunately, he was displaced in February twenty nineteen, and he's relocated.
Okay, any other discussions? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Shaw?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
Yeah.
Mayor Protim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
And Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Mayor Protim, you have five, um, five yays and one nay.
Okay, motion carrying. Item E?
Item E is is consider approval of a special land use for a medical and adult use marijuana provisioning center to be located on the south side of Cherry Hill Road in the existing shopping center at two nine three eight five Cherry Hill in the B two Thoroffair mixed-use district, Samantha Bevins is the applicant.
Okay. That's, we gotta, um, support on this?
So move, Madam Chair.
Any support?
Support.
Okay.
Before we, um, before we take a vote on this, this is City Attorney David Jones.
Okay.
I I just want to remind council that this, the Bevins matter has been resolved pursuant to a lawsuit in the Wayne County Circuit Court. Uh, Holistic Health and Bevins filed a lawsuit claiming serious several counts, including misrepresentation and equal protection. And back on September twenty first, the council voted that to settle this matter when the third medical marijuana business license became available in the City of Inxter. Uh, and part of the resolution of that lawsuit was that subject to Bevins, who changed the name uh of Holistic Health to Vibe Consulting LLC, subject to them completing all of the requirements pursuant to the Inxter ordinance, pursuant to the planning requirements, the special conditions, land use, and all state requirements that she would be issued a a business license. As Member Chisholm mentioned at last week's city planning commission meeting, they were approved unanimously, and pursuant to the vote taken on September twenty first, um, council has already resolved and voted to issue this business license with regard to the medical use that was uh in 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 order to settle the dispute. Uh, a vote still does need to be taken with regard to the adult use, but that also passed out of planning commission last week unanimously, and they are, in my opinion, they're And there, in my opinion, there are no, no justifiable reasons to hold the issuance of that business license up. So I just want to remind Council that this is a matter that had been previously voted on. Now, for all intensive purposes, we're just here for the adult use.
Thank you. Any discussion after that?
Madam Chair. Go ahead, go ahead, Council.
Okay, my, my concern is the fact that um, even with this pending, there's been, we've been expending our, our, our legal finances still on this person even after we've settled it. So I don't think um, uh, Attorney Jones went into that. I mean, if you look at uh, the litigation report, her name is in it every month. We're still expending money on her after we thought we were resolving this situation.
Oh, I can respond to that. Uh, Member Watley is absolutely correct because we voted back in September of two thousand and twenty to resolve the matter. Uh, Bevins and her counsel were under the impression that once we voted to settle the case, that they would just be automatically issued a business license in the city of Inkster. And if you recall, in several of the closed sessions, I indicated that they would still, the settlement was subject to them completing all of the requirements pursuant to city ordinance, pursuant to state law, pursuant to county law, and, and they have done so. They got impatient and filed several matters, at least two motions, to enforce the settlement of this case, arguing that the city improperly dragged this matter out. On each of those motions, uh, the city prevailed, um, and their motion was denied. Also would uh, give you a note that when you get our, in, copy of our invoices, they're always thirty days in arrears. So the bills that you approve this month are thirty days prior. So, but you're correct, we are extending legal fees because they have filed several motions and made several arguments. But uh, I would assure you that if we don't do the right thing pursuant to the settlement tonight, those legal fees will continue. So it's my um, advice to the council to vote yea to resolve this matter completely.
Okay, are you done? Um, Councilwoman Watley?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilman Shaw?
And, and, and uh, just to ask David, now, we also, we also uh, entered into the adult use, am I correct?
Well, council passed the resolutions several months ago. The only applicants or entities eligible for the adult use would be the entities that had the medical use. And therefore, they qualify pursuant to, you know, that resolution that council passed. And they have completed, again, went through planning for the adult use as well.
Okay, yeah, that's what I, okay, ca- call for the question.
Oh, I have one, I have one more thing.
Oh, okay.
Some clarity here, we did not pass that three. We decided in, uh, it, correct me if I'm wrong, because that was one of my stipulations that did not go through on council, that the recreational would be paired with the medical. That did not pass. So what are we talking about now?
Madam Chair, just some uh, point of clarity.
Okay, um, Felicia?
Yeah, the ordinance, the ordinance does not, uh, uh, the ordinance doesn't have that in there in regards to them being a pair type of um, thing. So that is not in the ordinance.
No, I agree, it's not in the ordinance, but I, it was my understanding that council voted that the only eligible businesses were the ones for a adult use were the ones who currently have the medical, that did not pass.
No, I would need, no, I would need to lift that aspect of it up.
Okay, I do remember talking about it, but.
No, because I, as, as, as I recall, the attorney uh, stepped in and said that it would be better to use um, uh, the, the, the spacing as opposed to limiting.
Okay, all right, well, that notwithstanding, uh, Ms. Hines is on the call. She can advise that they have gone, and Member Chisholm as well, they have gone through planning and completed all the requirements for the adult use.
Ye- yes, um, I, I guess just to kinda clear it up, so if, there were talks of pairing the recreational or adult use licenses with the medical. When we passed the ma- um, marijuana business license, what, about six months ago or something like that, whenever it finally came before us and it went through, um, a couple of us voted no, some voted yes. That language was not in there. So at this particular time, those particular persons have already applied and they were able to go through. But going forward, that language does not affect anybody who applies for an adult use. That is why Councilwoman Watley, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Washington had invoked a moratorium for one year, and this body voted on that unanimously. But at this particular time, what we're voting on, whether it was to pair those with the three medical or not, it still doesn't impact this particular applicant.
Okay.
Thank you, Member Chisholm.
No problem.
Okay, do I have any other, anybody else want, um, having discussion on this item? Okay, roll call, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
And Councilmember Watley?
No.
Mayor, we have, Mayor Pro Tim, we have five yays and one nay.
Chisholm, did you vote?
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay. So motion, motion passed. Okay, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. Okay, public participation?
Uh, di- did you want me to take over, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Oh, alrighty, we're at public participation, the general audience has an opportunity to address this body. You have one minute to speak once you are unmuted. Please raise your hand, um, by using the raise hand feature if you have dialed in by video. Please use star nine to raise your hand if you've dialed in by telephone. And those on Facebook, if you need, if you wish to uh, participate in public comment, you would have to join us by Zoom in order to do so. Um, at this, and I know um, Tony Bailey from the Beautification Committee, Madam Chair, did have an announcement. If she's not in the room at all, um, I'll make the announcement for her during council communications.
Okay, okay.
And we have at this time, Madam Chair, four hands raised, and I will unmute the first caller. Caller, please state your name for the record, once you are un-
Hello?
They aren't unmuted yet.
Okay.
Not have accepted it, I don't know how, there they are.
Hello?
Good evening, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, Council, and all. This is Tony Bailey with Inkster Beautification, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Um, I'm before you to announce, to save the date, next month will be our community-wide um, bring annual spring cleanup, which will be April twenty-four, Saturday. So this is to save the date that I'm announcing, and I will give more information next month.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And our next caller is unmuted, please state your name for the record, you have one minute. Name on the screen says Yvette B.
Hello?
Hello, Council, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'm concerned about all of the trash that's across the street from Precision. It looks like all types of metal and items that they have in the parking lot across the street from their facility off of John Daly. I know once before, under the old administration, they cleaned it up, but now it's a hot mess all over again.
Okay, can you say?
Precision on John Daly. Directly across the street, there's two lots. They have all types of metal, one side of it looks just like scrap metal and the, the other one looks like it's building materials that they're using. But it's really bad.
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Councilman Chis- um, Chisolm, we have our next caller.
Yes, Pastor Jean.
Oh, thank you, good afternoon, actually, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Yes, I just wanted to call in with a couple of things. One, we had an amazing opportunity to celebrate Inkster last Saturday, and we took full advantage of it. Thank you for those that participated within the city. It's really good to know that we appreciate one another and that we're aware of who's working among us. So I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly congratulate our winners, Officer Safe, Richard Williams from Zaman, Leanna Hicks Library, Mrs. Tangela Ward, India Harris, Priya Williams, Mrs. Crystal Burns-Lenton. So we truly had a great celebration, many of you were on, so appreciative to everyone that joined in. Hopefully, I'm looking forward to the day when we all work together collaboratively to see who we can be at our very best. So that was absolutely great, wanna thank you for the council people that nominated individuals. That really helps to know that you're aware who works with you in the community. Uh, also, I have a special announcement for the uh, organizations that I work with, for the police and mayors in our Wayne County, we will have another listening tour. It is coming up Thursday. If you're interested, the information will be on Operation Web- website for operationrefuge.org, so you can check it out there. It, we've been doing these, and we've done most of Wayne County, our seventeen communities that we are covering within double ACP and the seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand voices of CWC. So we are trying to do something with um, policing after the governor made a mandate that racism is a national health crisis, so please join us. We will be doing a true presentation, just gonna get with Felicia to get on her schedule so that you can actually see what happened with Operation Refuge and our COVID twenty-twenty heroes. So again, thank you, hope those of you that saw it enjoyed it. And we would like to thank our mayor, Mr. um, George Williams, as well as Councilman Shaw for the nominations that they gave. Thank you so much. God bless everyone.
God bless you, thank you.
And we have our next caller.
Hi, yes, this is uh, Charles Blackwell. I have comments for played out Councilman George Bernard Williams. You are very out of order to bring up my personal business, my personal finances. Instead of you worrying about my finances, how about you worry about the out of whack city of Inkster finances? How about you worry about that budget and finances? Secondly, how about you worry about stop wearing those played out nineteen ninety flood and suits too?
Thank you, um, next caller.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Council, well, not Mayor, Mayor's not in tonight, um, Pro Tim Mayor, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hope you guys are well. Um, I wanna first of all, thank Congresswoman To leave for the updates. I want to just let you know that, as she stated, Western Wayne Family Health Center will be doing co-investations on Saturday. They are still for persons at this time who are fifty and up. Um, but it starts at eight o'clock AM on Saturday, this Saturday. Now, for those folks who did have a first shot, and you know who you are, your second shot is coming up this Friday. So make sure that you attend and, and as your own schedule. So we do wanna just remember that. And the final thing I want to do is um, just let you all know that the Inkster Chamber of Commerce, our twenty-second annual event is coming up on Tuesday, March the twenty-third. This is our annual fundraiser, so please go to Eventbrite, which you should have received information already. And soon as you go to Eventbrite, Inkster Chamber will pop up as soon as you put in Inkster. So please do um, sign up, participate, support. And I also wanna give a thanks um, to Councilman Shaw for giving a shout out for the Inkster Chamber. Thank you guys so much, um, and let's be well, Inkster, let's get to it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. You have any more?
Yes, we have, uh, Denise Champagne is on mute right now.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Just a quick reminder, just a quick reminder that this Thursday is the second shot for those that came to the rec center to have their vaccine shot given. So the clinic is between the hours of twelve and four. Please come to the complex at the same, same time you're scheduled to get your first shot. And um, we will not be giving out any other shots, it's just the second shot for those that were at the first session on the twenty-fifth of February. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have one last person. Jerome Bevins.
Good afternoon, uh, Mayor Pro Tim and Council and the all viewing audience. Um, I'm here to make an announcement for Yosemite Missionary Baptist Church. We're having a drive-by food giveaway on March twenty-seventh, the last Saturday this month. Start at eleven-thirty AM. We will be giving away food until it runs out. And the church address is twenty-nine zero-six-six Eden Street, Westland, Michigan. Thank you, guys, that's all I have.
Okay, uh, Mr. Bevins, can you give us the church name again, cuz I think you cut off at the beginning of your speech.
Gus- Yosemite Missionary Baptist Church.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Do you need the address again?
No, it's twenty-nine zero-six-six, right, Eden?
Eden Street, Westland, Michigan.
Okay.
And it's from eleven-thirty AM until we run out.
All right, good job, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, that's it, um, Councilman Chisholm?
Yes, that's it.
All right, uh, CD Clark?
Mayor Pro Tim, I have no comments tonight.
All right, uh, CD Treasurer?
Yep, this will be brief, um, February month-end close, we're near completion, so we'll send the financials out to Council for your review in the next week. Um, you're welcome to email me back questions just like last month, and I'll do the uh, variance analysis for you guys. Um, the city audit, uh, we're still on track for our uh, extended due date of April first. Uh, FDCVT grants, uh, we've submitted several of those. And we just have a couple uh, remaining open that we're putting together a few items for. Um, that will help with uh, some of our cash inflow between now and hopefully the end of April. Uh, CDBG grants, uh, Tracy is working hand in hand with Wayne County on these. Um, and we're hoping to get everything in this month for those, which should also help us with some of our cash inflow in April. Um, regarding the four-point-three million I've previously mentioned that's owed to Wayne County for water and sewer invoices. Uh, it is now, uh, I spoke with someone at the risk department there that I have a connection with, and we let them know that we're looking for an elimination of penalties and interest and an eight-to-twelve-month payment plan for our liquidity purposes. He's taking that to the county CFO, so we're optimistic that that'll uh, work out in our favor. Um, and then, as normalized, wanna say thanks to the Treasury team, thank you to the HR team, and thank you to IT.
All right, thank you. Okay, we up on the mayor and council communication, uh, Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I guess I can talk now, right? Okay, uh, I, I definitely wanna bring up something because, you know, um, and I, I'm just saying this. I am sick and tired of the character assassination on the mayor. Okay, it's not fair to him that we continue to allow someone- Who lived in a, lived in a, in a glass house on bricks. Okay, and I think it's, it's time, you know, uh, that. We just sit here and do nothing. A lot of people is getting enjoyment. Out of the attack character assassination, uh, you know, but we don't have to, we don't have to do it. Inkster is not like that. You know, and people who attacking folks in Inkster need to learn, the more you talk about them, the better off people like them. So I'm just saying, you know, I want to see cleanup, you know, to go there and people trying to open up businesses. And we out here encouraging them on the outside to open up businesses, get involved in your community. All of the land, if you see people are buying in the area now, it's by us going out, talking to them and telling them to buy up the land and, you know, and, and keep it cut. That's saving the city money. People don't realize it because if they buy the land and keep the grass and stuff cut around it and stuff like that, that mean that's something we don't have to spend. You know, so when we out here and we trying to do this uh, thing, and we got to come together in unity, you know. People that work in here, you know, we got to get more friendly. I'm just going to tell it like it is because it's not, you know, we, somehow, you know. We, we, we got these attitudes that, 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 that we don't care who we work for, but you know, the people of the community are who we work for. And therefore, we have to always remember that without them, we ain't nothing. So we need to understand that. And for Mr. Blackwell coming back on there and talking about somebody talking about him, wow, he really got nervous the way he's been. Uh, character assassinating the mayor and set character assassinating uh, uh, Steve Chisholm and, and. And I think he did a clerk one time, you know, we, we, you know, he going down the road, okay? He think that's fair, okay? Then he goes down there and he gets free four years. He come back and just keep harassing folks, okay? That like he saying, well, the council should do something about the mayor because the mayor owe count, uh, uh, uh. Um, we don't have no authority to do nothing to the mayor, the old, old that because I don't know what happened to the, the language that was in the charter. It was in the charter that if somebody got behind their taxes, they had a certain time to pay it up. You remember that, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
You remember that? But honestly, I don't know what happened to it.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. Yes.
I, I don't know what happened to it.
It was taken out of the charter. It was written out of the charter. Yes.
Okay. You know, to keep beating a dead horse, trying to attack the mayor because he owe some taxes and stuff like that. Okay, people coming back talking about people owe taxes and trying to, to assassinate people. That's not, that, that don't mean they criminals because they owe taxes. I would hate to see me get behind in my taxes. You call me a criminal? I mean, if somebody is living out here, and, 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 and one time won't get behind any taxes, you know, I, hey, I, I love them type of people. We all gonna have some hardships. Okay, and let us work together. Let us take the child Blackwell and set him aside and let us come together. Okay, because he's not going to do, he, all they're talking, you know, the more, the more he talk about somebody, the better off people gonna love him in Inkster. That's the way I always know it. And I've been there all my life, born and raised. And just, and just like I would like to say this, I just hope that he would stop and come aboard and try to help us be supportive right here in Inkster. You see what I'm saying? Because I know that the guy from WXYZ didn't do all of that great raising that money for him, for him to be attacking people like he doing. And what makes me so mad is David Jones, who's the attorney of the city of Inkster, is just not David Jones. He's from a law firm called Allen and Allen Associates, alright, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so therefore, why are you just checking, uh, 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 attacking at David Jones? You got a reason for that. Maybe you get on air and tell us why you keep attacking at him. Why are you attacking at the mayor? You know. I wish, I, I wish I had some authority that I'll tell you to give him, give him a chance to talk about it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Washington?
Good evening. Um, asking for more police presence on Glenwood. Um, there's been um, a lot of complaints coming to me since about uh, noise nuisance and speeding. Um, also just more, it is March reading month for all. So I have partnered with the Inkster Library to go to a couple elementary schools in the city of Inkster this month to read to the children. That's my last, that's the last update I have.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Watley?
Um, yes, Madam Chair. Um, I have a request, first of all, and I don't, I guess the clerk. Um, if we could have a clean copy of the marijuana ordinance, as I recall, we never received one. So I would like a clean copy outlining everything that was in it. Uh, or specifying, you know, the actual ordinance in its place. That's one of my requests. The second is an announcement I'm making for um, Virginia Williams Councilwoman in the city of Romulus. Every Tuesday at noon, Forgotten Harvest does a food giveaway. And it'll be every Tuesday, starting at noon at the Romulus High School. From now until further notice for Hot- Forgotten Harvest and a um, food giveaway. Uh, one of the number, it starts at twelve noon and one of the numbers you can call for further information is seven-three-four. Six-seven-three, eight-three, one-six. I think that's a one, hang on. No, eight-three-nine-six, repeating, seven-three-four. Six-seven-three, eight-three-nine-six. And that's a food giveaway uh, provided by Forgotten Harvest. Uh, Councilwoman Virginia Williams has sent this information to be referred to you. It's occurring at Romulus High School on Wayne Road every Tuesday at noon. And that's it for me.
Alright, thank you. Councilman Chisom?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have nothing at this time. Just want to tell everyone to continue, remain. Excuse me, continue to mask up and be safe. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Councilman Shaw?
Yes, Madam Chair. I just want to continue to encourage all the block captains. To, if you see something, say something, because we in this time of season, people are going to be out. Uh, and I want to encourage you to make sure that if you see something, say something. And I also want to thank uh, Chief Riley and the Inkster Police Department for the patrolling on Helen Street. I did see the Inkster PD out and, and patrolling that street. And I wanted to give a time. It was at four fifty-seven PM when I saw him. So I just wanted to let the chief know and I want to thank those officers for patrolling uh, that area over there. And also I had concerns about, uh, I noticed that season, Mr. Bivens, uh, concerning potholes. Um, that's going to be a hot topic, I know, for this spring and summer. Uh, but we, we over here in the northeast section of the city, uh, with big craters. Um, and I, I hate for people to try to go to work in the morning and miss and hit one of those potholes and get a flat tire. So um, if you can give me a schedule on when you're going to be out. On Avondale is one of our main streets, um, you know, when you're going to be out uh, filling potholes. And also, I would want to thank uh, Ms. Tracy Ann J or Jennings. For, for, for supplying that checklist. I know that the council was talking about the checklist for land sales and purchase of vacant properties that was in the packet. So I want to thank uh, the administration and Tracy uh, for putting that in the package. And Madam Chair, I, I have one more thing. Oh, police patrol on Crescent, La Serne, and West Hills. And also, one more thing, Madam Chair. I am putting together and the information will be coming forth. I want to have a park drawing contest with the children. And that information is going to be coming forth. We have a park in my district that's kind of dilapidated. And I want to get the children involved to have an art contest. And we're going to give out some cash prizes and it's going to be coming forth with that information. We're going to have some flyers and we're going to be. Distribute them out. And I would ask for volunteers to help out uh, in passing out those flyers. It will be coming forth. Uh, I will be giving information to the clerk's office as well. So that's all I have, Madam Chair. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Okay, I, um, I have a question to Vijay. Uh, on the four point three Wayne County, uh, four point three million, what is our balance as of today?
Um, I don't have that offhand. We've been paying some of them to catch up. So it's probably right around uh, four point five, I would think.
Four point five?
I would think right now, the outstanding amount's probably right around four point five.
Okay, so there's something else, uh, because I don't have my uh, budget, budget book with me. But I do know the four point three million, we have been paying on it for the last move. So we haven't paid anything on it, is what you're telling me?
There's, and it, there's the multiple components, I think that you, you emailed me about this, right? So my response was really, what I was trying to explain is, there's the component you were talking about, which related to the judgment, right? And then there's the other component, which is just our normal monthly invoice they send. And it's these invoices going back to twenty eighteen that remain accrued but not paid. So they're properly reflected in the PNL over the years. But it is essentially grossing up our balance sheet because we're holding on cash, but we also have a higher liability.
Okay, so what you saying from twenty eighteen, um, they sent us an invoice and we never paid. So from twenty eighteen up until now, it's back up to four point three million? Is that what you said, as saying?
Yeah, so the four point three was due to an audit that the county was undergoing. So that's how we figured out that four point three million. And then since then, there's been a little bit added on, but we started paying it in December. So that's where I'm getting the four point five. I'm taking the amount from September thirtieth and adding an additional invoice or two onto it.
Okay, so this is a, this is an additional thing. So the four point million that we had the judgment on, okay.
This, this is not, this isn't a judgment. These are just normal invoices.
Okay, okay. So when you say four point three, that mean that's exactly the same amount was the judgment. So that's why I was confused that. You know, that's why I asked you what the balance was.
Oh, okay. I think that's just coincidental.
Okay, okay. So, so invoices were, I mean, I can't believe that Wayne County would let us sit on invoices from two thousand eighteen. And never said anything to Plant Moran. I have to go back in my audit because that would have been in our audit uh, report. As something that was lacked. And I don't, I don't remember seeing it, but I will be going back at the audits from nineteen and twenty. To see um, if they rolled us up on it.
So the, the, the way that this works though is because these invoices were received, or at least they were accrued for. So when they're accrued, it is impacting your PNL and it is impacting your balance sheet. So it's properly reflected and booked from an accounting standpoint. It's just the consideration that we have more cash on hand. Because we have not necessarily paid the amount that was due. So our cash is artificially high and our liabilities are high. But they're properly booked. So from an audit standpoint, we wouldn't have an issue like that. So uh, you'll, you'll see it properly stated in any of the financials, anything like that. There's not a, a PNL impact that's going to surprise us, but it's impactful. Because of what it can do from a fund balance standpoint. So that's why we're trying to work on uh, paying it over a period of eight to twelve months. So that we don't take the full cash impact at once. We don't have to worry about our liquidity. And it, it kind of helps us ensure that we maintain enough cash on hand for. Whether it's operations or whether it's, you know, we call it a rainy day, if something happens. That we're not uh, in a disastrous situation.
Okay, uh, my next question. Now, when the invoices come in to get paid, who are they sent to? Are they sent, I mean, who, who is the primary person?
So.
Or, or a department that these water bills that we pay, um, Wayne County, who, who is it addressed to? Who's?
It is addressed to me at City Hall. Um, so going forward, what I'm asking the county to do is. If they could email it, uh, email it to Jerome. Copy our accounts payable shared email so that both Jerome and my department have it electronically.
Okay, okay. And one other thing, um, we did get the expenditures uh, report for last month. But we did not get the check registry. Um, can you send that on to the council, please?
Yeah, so it was actually the second tab in that, that file. The, this, the Excel file had two tabs in it. The first tab, I can resend it, but yeah, I, I apologize. I was just hoping to combine it. To only have to send you guys one file so that you don't have two files going forward.
Okay, I'm, 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 am I the only person that didn't get it? Uh, did anybody else get that, the check registry for last month?
Uh, yes, madam, we got it. It is the second tab. If you go up to the bottom of the Excel sheet. To the right, there's another tab that says check register.
Okay, okay. Alright, okay. Well, thank you, Vijay.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, uh, call for adjournment?
Madam Chair?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
No, you didn't do anything wrong. I just wanted to ask Jerome Bivens when compost starts to be picked up, since we've been having all this great weather.
Right, quick. Uh, the first Monday of April, which would be April the fifth.
Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
Alright, is there anything else before we adjourn? Okay, call for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Alright, all those in favor say aye? Alright, good night.
Good night. Have a good night, everybody.